Good evening and welcome to the Barrington Select Board meeting of Monday, December 2022. Little call Gibson here.
Captain yellow here.
Hey, Mantrick here. Mr. Sosha, are you online?
I'm here.
Very good. Thank you very much. I ask you to join me in pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
But gender we do. You think?
It's.
Second. Okay, although it's in favor. The start of the election. Very good. It's time for our first public comments. Section, so let me go over this again. Meeting is open to the public. The public participation is limited. If you would like to be heard, if you're present, you'll wait till you're recognized and then you can come and address the chair or the board. First, you need to recite your name and address for the record. Visitors should address their comments to the chair and the select board as a body and not to their name or not to any individual. Each speaker shall be provided a single opportunity for comment. You don't need just three minutes. Visitors should not expect a response to their comments or questions since the select board may not have discussed or taken a position on a matter. Public comment is not a two-way dialogue in the speaker of the select board in northern town administration. Are there any public comments from those present? For those of you who are online, if you'd like to make comments, please raise your hand. It's likely to be recognized. Those of you who are on the telephone, four, six, and when you're recognized, they feel take yourself off the mute and you have your three minutes available to you.
I don't see anything virtually, Mr. Chair.
The. Okay, I see no public comments online. No one present is offered to speak. So we'll hold, we'll pause our public comment. There will be another public comment section toward the end of the meeting. Public carrying, school board. I've never seen anyone here at this point. School board will need comments. Budget presentation, advisory budget committee final report. Peter, would you like to speak to that? Or Michael, either, either one or both? Both of you are on the committee. If you'd like comment or like to. Mike, here your.
I think our minutes.
Do.
And again, what we tried to do was to evaluate each one article by help head for merits. And they were four that we did not want to consider. Again, for reasons conservation, because we settled in plenty of money within their own budget, not to have to ask the town for $2,000. Energy, because we didn't think it was self-finable enough as far as what they purposely intended to do. This was fun. I tried to do this.
The, the public safety.
Public safety against the side of that. Any kind of stuff.
And the library capital reserve.
And library capital reserves.
Technology.
Yeah, again, they already gained $9,000 in that fund. So we thought we would leave that alone and instead support the construction library, which we reduced from the requested 75 down to 25. We also thought we would like to see the, and we had the footprints reduced from 300,000 to 200,000. Again, we're trying to consider the bottom line and those were reputations that we looked at.
And so you all have that summarized in the ABC minutes. And obviously, the backdrop for this is this year, we're not, we don't have available unassigned fund balance to commit to funding these articles. And it's a good year. We've heard feedback over the years from residents that having warrant articles funded from fund balance doesn't really give the residents an option to decide whether they want to support the article or not. And so this is a good opportunity. The budget committee has thought and the select board thought earlier in the process to take and say, we'll put all the warrant articles on the tax rate with a tax rate impact and allow voters to make a decision that they think is best for the community. And then the next thought process, the thought process of the budget committee alongside that was also using this as an opportunity to prioritize the warrant articles so that they're presented to voters in the order that the budget committee and select board feel is of the highest priority. Previously, we would do them in descending order of dollar value, just so there's some rhyme or reason, but not, you know, favoring any article over another. And so the, the budget committee in reviewing all of the warrant articles felt that it was too much of an ask for the voters to put almost one and a half million dollars worth of warrant articles in addition to the operating budget in front of them. Not that all the projects didn't have their own merits, but the, they identified it as, you know, their role to make what they felt was a reasonable request for residents to consider. And so this is obviously a recommendation of the select board. Hopefully, the select board's in a position to finalize tonight, make any changes to that list and finalize what the warrant articles will look like, the, the monetary warrant articles will look like going into the town meeting.
Again, we ranked them one to three, which three being the most priority. And then put it to some score of six, we believe. And so again, there were five that we thought were imperative that we, you know, recommend highly. And then the others were of less importance.
Does it have that scoring sheet?
It's included in that.
Is there a possibility we can post this so people will do on?
I can.
Here. We have a nice copy here, but. There's also, in addition, for your, excuse me, for.
No, please.
I mean, there, there is a second page to their recommendation, which they feel it's important to let people know what the ran, what their rationale for the. Their rationale is.
That's.
They're in much more detail than we recently given. There's some concern that when you put up the ballot, I'm not even sure how you, there may be a limit to what they can put on the actual ballot. Do you happen to know that? There were some thoughts that it might be better if we had a little better explanation than just say capital reserve. Bridge and color capital reserve $300,000, true or distrue?
Yes, there.
To explain that in the, on the ballot itself.
It, there's a very limited ability. Generally, the information that has historically been included is what can be included. And that's dictated by statute. The select board could certainly propose language and we could discuss it with the DRA and/or the town's attorney. But there's not, the warrant articles themselves don't legally provide for an explanation like you might want to include because the language is dictated by law.
That's what I thought.
Some, right. Some years they've sent them back to us with changes. I say you can't put this in there.
Right.
I thought there was something, but that doesn't keep it off of our ask, ask the town. Ask Barrington.
That's right. Ask the town and also the school. What's that paper called? The school sends out and talks about all the warrant articles from both sides. And they have kind of a simple explanation that goes with it because they have the mailer and we don't have the mailer for the approval of the state. I have some question.
Yes, sir, please.
Peter.
Yes.
On page three here, my friend, he turned around and says the average home was $350,000.
That was a guess for sure.
Yes, thank you.
As, as a matter of, when we did the tributary, then the average home price in this town right now is 349,000.
Oh, so beautiful.
We were.
Pretty close.
Yeah, we were.
I went a few thousand dollars.
I, I guess, I guessed 500,000.
I did, I did also. Here's sale of some of these houses up here in the back is.
Me.
It's amazing.
I think, what did we find the meeting was? I thought a little less than that. This is a good number. It's just a number. If you want to do it by your own taxes, go to the sum of the taxes where they're on the second column.
The impact to the right.
Right. There, I think you also mentioned too that there was no particular concern about the outbreak in Baltimore.
Correct. I hate many of us had concerns over the increase, but we realized in inflationary times to then, it's transitory, of course.
And I know Rob had a question and I want to let you know Jim also has his hand up remotely.
Jim, go ahead. Why don't you go first, Jim, since?
Hey, so who writes the, the must-have this year? Who, who calls that shot?
The select board.
Okay, so that's what we need this year. And then also, and had a question. You know, you know, this is where I get all my friends here, but the library capital reserve, where we've had a did decrease in staff and whatnot and what we're going through and kind of rebuilding that, they, why do they need another 25,000, you know? That was just a couple of questions that I had.
We thought long-term, again, putting money aside towards the library and they have some immediate expenses coming up relative to architectural design and other things that we didn't want them to completely deplete their existing capital reserve.
But didn't they get donations and whatnot and already have a little bit of a fund built up for all of this?
Up to the chair?
Yeah, go ahead. Ms. Scotty Ellis here, if you can hear her.
I'm sure I can. It's 2022. We got it.
Yeah, Ms. Scotty Ellis, the chair of the library trustees. And in keeping with what, what Peter was saying, we do have some money in the capital reserve that has been added to the last two years. We asked for a larger supplement, but quite honestly, I think we would be content with this. We have spoken to our architect about the investment we'll need to make in the next year and design, redesign and so on in order to bring forward a proposal for the 2024 ballot. With respect to the question about, didn't we raise money already? We have, the foundation, library foundation has raised in in kind and primarily cash donations and pledges, a little over $500,000. Those pledges are specifically for the construction of the library. In other words, donors donate a certain amount of money and their, their name would be on a bookshelf or, you know, a window or that sort of thing. It's very specific about the actual construction and not about the design and, and that kind of work leading up to presenting proposal.
Well, you're gonna have to excuse my opinion on this one, but you know, architectural and design and prints, those are the nuts and bolts of your building. And you know, those are very crucial to a project. So for that money not to be able to go to that, I find that disappointing because you know, that's, that's, that's how it starts out. That's how the projects happen. That's how they get forward. That's how you get your permits. That's how you get approvals, inspections and you know, everything from fire safety to so on and so forth, so.
I don't disagree with you, but here's the reason that we have to save those dollars for the actual construction once the building is approved to go forward. If the warrant article does not pass this next time we bring it forward, we have three tries. We have basically contracts with our donors. And the contract states that we get to go three times. If it fails on the third try, we must give the money back to the donors or offer them. They obviously can choose to leave the money with the foundation, but if they want their money back, we can't have spent it because we have to be able to return it to the donors.
So do the donors not have a good instinction that it's going to pass and they rather see their name on a shelf than to try and get this passed?
We would have to go back to all of the donors in order to ask them to amend that agreement.
How many donors are there?
I could not tell you. I'm not, I'm not on the foundation board, so I don't know the exact number of donors they have. I only know the, the general dollar amount that has been donated, but whether the, I think it's kind of a moot point because quite honestly, if we do the design work using the monies that, that voters have contributed to that capital reserve in order to do the design and bring forward the proposal, well, if it fails, the donations go back and the town has invested those monies and I guess we go back to the drawing board. If the, if it passes, it's kind of like whether the money comes out of the right pocket or the left pocket, it will all go towards that same project.
Understood.
I'm sorry?
I said understood.
Okay, sorry. If I can get another question. Thanks.
Let's forget some of how to, go ahead. Yeah, I'm sorry. Are you done, Jim?
Yes.
Okay, Rob.
The dam repair capital reserve, Peter, is that? How specific is that in the specific explains or?
It would be swains, yes.
Is that going to be clearing the warrant or to the people voting?
I mean, so yeah, I'll clarify. So I, the language, as we've discussed with a warrant article of a capital reserve, the most important language is the purpose statement, which is included in the warrant article when it's originally passed. The title doesn't matter. The, when you add money to it, as long as everybody agrees where the money's supposed to go, that doesn't matter. The trustee, the trust funds are the gatekeeper and they look at the language that was used when it was originally established. For the dam repair engineering replacement capital reserve, that purpose statement is not specific to Swains Lake Dam. Years ago, there was a Swains Lake Dam capital reserve that was specific to Swains Lake Dam. That one was closed and this one was open to be generic to dams, period. And so the, I, I, to, I imagine that your question is, will voters know that they're appropriating that money to, for projects on the Swains Lake Dam instead of the Richardson Pond Dam? That would be our responsibility to make sure that residents see the budget documents that the road agent submitted listing what projects of importance that he has for that capital reserve that the select board agree to. And generally, at deliberative session, the, I've been having each select board member present the warrant articles and give just a couple of sentences on what the upcoming planned projects are that we're saving money for. So we'll have opportunities to do that.
So with the police fund, this is really probably something you can discuss, Connor. If the police department is hoping to go forward in 23, do they have some other funding in order to flesh out their design work?
No, not necessarily. The select board may, but the, the police department doesn't have access to funds outside of their operating budget. Or nor does the fire department for the most part. And really, I think that of the warrant articles that's off the list, that would certainly be one that would burden next year's select board with targeting a 2024 warrant article for a bond for the public safety building. I, the budget committee made the recommendation to select board this year that it was too late in the process to put a bond forward to voters this year. And I think that was a wise recommendation, favoring, hey, let's get a, get more of a design put together. Now, without appropriating funds, the select board would have a few options next year. The select board could use appropriated funds in the operating budget that become unnecessary for some reason, a planned expenditure that isn't necessary, things like that. The select board could also look towards the ARPA funds later in the year, late in the year. And so there might be funding opportunities, but that would be a, a risk that the, that would be the responsibility of next year's select board to reconcile in order to be prepared for a 2024 bond article, if that's still the select board's goal. And I won't speak for the library community, but I would suspect that all involved would want to make sure to stay committed to a 2024 year to present the public safety building expansion, because I would fear that the, if the public safety building renovation expansion was put off to 2025 and the library went in 2024, it would be too easy for, for folks to dismiss the library project because the public safety building is, is coming up the next year. And so, you know, I'd encourage the select board to think about how committed the board is to a 2024 bond for the public safety building and what steps next year's board might have to take to accomplish that without appropriating money this year.
Do you know if there's any wiggle room in this amount that's being posed? If this has worked for the police?
I think there would be. So one of the things that we included in the 150,000 was funds for an impact fee study. And so what an impact fee does is it assesses a one-time fee on generally new residences that would go towards the impact that they will have on the services that they receive. So we've had a school impact fee that was just released by the planning board. And that was essentially every new home in Barrington wrote a $4,500 check and that check went towards paying off the middle school bond. And so you can have impact fees for a variety of things. It's brought forth by the planning board and the planning board considers those decisions based on an impact fee study, which you pay a consultant to perform. So we had funding in there for that. I think we only reserved 10 or 15,000 for that specific activity. But we could also reduce the scope of the design. We could bring, you know, the, there's a sliding scale of the design phase. And I think in October of this year, we were way very much at the beginning by spending the 25,000, the feasibility study to make sure that the building could structurally handle a renovation or addition. We could spend $50,000 and make a lot more progress than we have now, get some good elevations, make progress on the floor plan to have something more concrete that the voters could consider in 2024. And the rest of the design, the actual architectural prints and everything could be rolled into the bond cost. And I saw Jim had his hand back up, Mr. Chair.
Jim.
My recommendation is that we remove the library capital reserve from the minimal support with okay to defer. But i- if we do that, right, just, just talk of business because, you know, and it's my opinion and this is where I get all my friends, right? But I think the library probably made some promises that they can't keep and that's okay. But I don't think it's the time right now and, you know, nuts and bolts of it, I think that, you know, the priority should definitely be the to get the police and fire separated, get their buildings together and do that, you know? It's just the public safety buildings, it, it's gotta happen to, to have safety and, you know, efficient safety in our town. So, you know, that's, that's where my heart is on that. So that's all.
Jim, this is Joyce. Could you clarify what you meant by promises a library couldn't keep, just so I understand?
Well, I, I, I want to donate money, but I don't want to donate it towards the prince, only if my name's on a, on a, you know, at a bench or a bookshelf. You know, and I think that's, that's pretty prude, you know, and if you're really behind it, I think that you would be like, hey, what can I do? Because, you know, honestly, Joyce, that's what the type of person I am is, you know, if I want to do something, how can I accomplish it? How can I accommodate and, and how can I achieve the goal? It's not pick and choose on, on what part of that journey you want to partake in. It's the whole thing.
Thanks for clar.
Yes, Mr. Bailey. Peter. The library currently has in the neighborhood of $44,000 set aside in the warrant article. And you recommend to go to 25. We threw in the chair, at the chair's presentation. She's estimated to be right around $39,000 to have the study necessary. Did you give any consideration of lower than $25,000?
No, we, we. We started at 75 and went down.
Yes, I know we did. I know that was there. I read it earlier, but you didn't give it any consideration for any reason why.
Again, we thought.
I'm not, I don't mean to put you on the hot seat.
I don't, I don't think it definitely showed.
I did, yes, I know that, I did.
But it was simply to leave them some funds to work with in the future and not get them so low that they had their hands tied.
And the other aspect that I'd like to ask you about is the equipment for public.
Police.
Works and whatever, is that you cut that down by 100,000, so at 300, you went to 200. And during the timeframe we had here, and I know you're aware that we don't have enough people to follow. Some of our equipment's getting there. And as Mark made it, one of his presentations was the fact that, you know, his need to turn around and have the extra equipment necessary to provide the snow removal and other services necessary. He's buying two lighter pieces of equipment instead of the real heavy stuff. And was that part of any of the thing that you had, you and the team had a chance to do, were considering?
There was some discussion relative to that, but mostly I think it was what he already had in the capital reserve and what he was anticipating spending in the near future.
And I can speak to that. The, the budget committee has done a really good job working with department heads. No.
They had not said anything about they're not doing a good job, please.
No, I, no, I, I was just going to say specifically making equipment replacement schedules and making sure that they had the funding targets necessary to meet the schedule. And specific to the highway heavy equipment capital reserve, there are some larger expenditures anticipated in a few years, three, four, five years' time. And from the road agent's perspective, he proposed $300,000. He called it a shot in the arm. But to get, to, to make up some lost ground to be able to meet that schedule. And I think what the budget committee considered is that if we reduce it to 200,000 this year, but commit to adding another 200,000 next year, we'll be able to meet the schedule, but making a shorter term reduction in order to do so. And I don't want to speak for the committee, but those are the conversations early in the process I was party to.
Also, while we're talking about that, is that we realize that we have a lot of development going on and eventually there's going to be roads that we're going to have to take over and maintain after we have the board of selectmen turn around and selecting after the topcoats down. It would have to do the maintenance on it. And there again, it comes to a point of future use to turn around and have the equipment necessary to take care of all these areas. I'm not just talking about this one here, but there's, there's other ones that would be asked to take over after the roads are finished or the topcoat would have it. So, you know, there's a lot of things we have to look at to turn around and do it. And then my, my last piece, Peter, is I'm disappointed in the, I can't change this, but police department, I thought they needed two more individuals to go and they didn't bring it forward. So that's not your fault, but it's, it's my choice to turn around and talk about that. But I want to thank you and your team. You just did a tremendous job. There's a lot of people out there like myself that, you know, have their own ways, want to say things differently, whatever. I'm glad I had the privilege, but I really want to say thank you to all the volunteers that worked with you, with you, with you, with them. Thank you. It's all you.
I think one of the things that the committee did, you may remember a couple of years ago, where we started calculating Mr. Walker's proposed increases in his equipment and then we added it all up and we said, oh, this doesn't add up. So let's add some to the capital reserve each year. But the committee did the same thing with the, with the heavy equipment and found that if double up on the 200,000, what is 2034, I think is a huge of what to say, or the public works expenditure, that this has actually reached that goal.
I remember, remember we had a lot of discussion on doing it. And when they brought that's our attention, the select board did turn around and raise some of the articles for the. Turned around and raised some of the articles for the uh loans to turn around and vote for them.
They did, they did that same calculation and figured that two hundred thousand would would reach that goal in time.
If if I may add, um in addition, there were things on the list like the bridge. Yep. That um we had, we did have a discussion whether that was really an essential piece of equipment for the highway department. Or should they be renting the service? Um we really wanted to see some numbers relative to that. Because uh for what we're doing, we couldn't see the investment in that, in that expensive of a piece of equipment.
I understand. I still.
And I think Joyce had a question as well.
Same to you. Um so you mentioned um library technology would serve that nine thousand was sufficient. I don't have enough background to know the nature of their technology and whether that's a reasonable amount for them. So could I ask the library trustee?
Okay for that question. The um the capital reserve for technology for the library has actually started, I'm gonna say around ten years ago. When we needed to replace the circulation system, and that was like a fifteen thousand dollar um expense. So it was a warrant article at that time to fund it in one year. And the thought was, we need to be preparing for expenses like that, you know, which is essentially a software expense. As well as the other kinds of technology. The library uses a lot of computers and, for example, we have like um five monitors. These are public access monitors as well that are ten years old. I don't know the length of a monitor, but ten years is beginning to sound pretty creaky. Uh things like uh surge protectors and things like that. We've recently just done a um. Uh a complete inventory of all the technology and what year they were bought, you know, what their lifespan is. And that's the kind of thing that we also use those dollars for. Most organizations um. Do not uh build that into their annual operating budget. What we have chosen to do over time in consultation with the the town is to set us, have that separate warrant article for those expenses. So part of the reason to have that is not just, do we only need five thousand this year? I'm making up a number. We've got enough in there, that'll do. We really also are hoping to continue to inch that up. So that hopefully, when we get a new building, that we can use those funds to put towards those expenses of technology in the new building. Because that will be a pretty big price tag, I presume, when we do build a new building. So it's a combination of current needs for replacement of aging um equipment and. Building a a reserve for larger expenses that we'll be having in the future, whether it is software or whether it is. Putting technology, necessary technology in construction. And if I could take my opportunity while I'm up here to say, that three thousand dollar addition is not even one penny on the um. Uh on the tax rate, when you look at that list. So while I appreciate the ABC, but every, every chance I look at it, it's like, it's not even one penny. I think it would be like a dollar on a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar house in a year. So I would hope that you would maybe reconsider um that, that small warrant article. Sorry, you know, you get me at a podium.
I told you. Well, Mr. Scotia, I think I had a question.
I think Joyce had two.
Well, can I just have a follow up? When you looked at that, Peter, I saw where you wanted to keep the um the rate uh with the rate of inflation at eight point three. And you came in under that a little bit, around thirty three hundred dollars or something. So I was like, well, why wouldn't you have put that three thousand to? It would still be at the rate of inflation. But it sounds like you're false. The same argument. So I did, Jim, is your comment about the library? Because I want to switch to the Richardson dam.
Uh yes. So uh I actually have three questions. So one, have you seeked um, you know, the library community group? If they have any updated monitors that they could donate? Two, is there any grants out there or program that we can get started in that, you know, maybe, you know, if uh if it's a half or a quarter. But, you know, we're able to to gain some some traction with some grants, that would be really cool. And three, with technology gaining the way that it is, um do you see that maybe the future size of a a potential? Um future library being smaller, where, you know, you don't need as many books?
The um well, you have three really good and really different questions, so um I hope I remember them.
I can repeat them, don't worry.
As long as have we, have we looked to the community or library exporters or townspeople as to whether they would donate um monitors? To my knowledge, we haven't done that. I would have to ask staff. Um I have, I'm not aware currently of um grant opportunities specifically for equipment. However, with years ago, when we first got a lot of technology and we first really went into the um. Um having computers for public access as well as for the library. We got a substantial donation from the Gates Foundation. They were funding a lot of libraries. So our initial investment in technology years ago was through a large grant. And so since then, it's been primarily replacing aged equipment and sometimes expanding if we needed more more public access computers. Uh the third question, oh, as far as space in the library, um the. There is a lot more use of digital um books and the library invests in uh belonging to database projects. That allow people to download audio books and and Kindle typebooks, um ebooks. Uh so that is heavily used. There's still a lot of demand for print materials. Um however, the the expansion of the library is in certainly in part, not so much to get more space for more materials like books. Um to get them so that they're not as dangerously shelved as they are now, that practically up to the ceiling. Um it's not ADA accessible because we've crammed as much in there as we can. So that's one reason for some more square footage. The other is for the kind of programming and educational programming that we do at the library, where we don't have any space really for programming. Other than the children's um room, which is pretty small. So that's our goal. And our goal in the next iteration, at least my goal, is that we look more critically at the size. We had proposed a rather um a much smaller library than consultants said that we needed. It's the trustees at the time cut that back, but we're looking to having to turn that back further and still try to meet all the essential needs for the library going forward. Have I answered your questions at least?
Yeah, you did. Do you have, can I ask one more?
It's about the library, please, too, Jim.
Um, you know what, i- is there any way, because, you know, if you look at the, if you zoom out on the town and where our budgets go. And, you know, a lot of it's to schools, right? Is there any way that, you know, we can make a bond with the school? Because, you know, we we got a couple of libraries that are just in different spots. But if there was a way that we could open up a relationship uh with that and, you know, be able to trade paper back and forth. And and, you know, have something a little bit more communal, it might uh might just be a really good way to. Uh maximize space where we can, while we can, going into, you know, what, you know, economists are talking about and spending money and so on and so forth. Um do you have any relationships with the with the school and any programs like that?
The library has really excellent relationships with the the middle school and the elementary school. Um where we are trading materials back and forth. They get materials, the kids return them to the schools, we pick them up, that sort of thing. So we've had very active relationship there and certainly the summer reading programs, things like that. Uh the library makes available a lot of the materials for students that the the kids need as well. Um in the past, there have been questions of why can't we just have the public library be at the middle school, let's use that um property. And that generally does not work out well because of their issues related to public access and the security of the schools. Schools often put filters on computers. We we do not do that because of the adults and the other folks that use our computers at the library. So we can support one another and there's a lot of synergy there, but as far as co-locating. Um not that the school has extra space, they want to to give over to the town at this point. But I think we try to maximize that to the advantage of all concerned, the um the relationship with the schools and support the schools.
Thank you for answering that question. Just one statement that I have, you know, if um. If the library is for the greater good of the community and is in the best interest of the schools, because that's where a majority of our money goes. You know, I would love to see that the school is also a participate, uh a participant, not only, you know, at a boots on the ground. But monetary wise to the library, so it's not all on the burdens of um the town. But, you know, there's also a different way to, you know, society's changing really fast and, you know, it. Maybe the library isn't the main hub, but, you know, it it could be like the DoorDash of of libraries, you know what I mean? We have to, you know, if they wanna come in quick, get a book, drive through, but, you know, tons of options out there. But, you know, um I'm sorry, I gotta be the bad guy here, but I just have to speak. Uh of the other half of the voters that are out there. So just some questions I had. Thank you very much for answering them.
Well, and thank you, and I'd be happy to meet with you one on one at some other time and really dig further into your thoughts on the library and and going forward. I think the one thing I'd wanna remind folks is that while books are very important and the other materials that we make available to people in town to borrow. Um that's very important, but it's also the interaction and the education, onsite education that takes place. That's really a um very important role for the for the library in any community. Many people talk about it as the living room of the community, so it's more living room than DoorDash. But as I say, I'd be very happy to talk with Jim for your um on the sun. Thank you.
I appreciate that. And some say uh the apple pie was invented in Barrington. We're a small town, maybe, you know, keep that in mind, too.
Would point out for the taxpayers that the library saved about half a million dollars in book buys this year. Um just by people using the library instead of buying books on their own. I think that's the number on that.
Probably, yeah.
Yeah, five hundred and when I checked yesterday, it was five thirty seven. Five hundred and thirty seven thousand some dollars later. All right, uh Ms. Cappio, I have another question.
Yeah, you have a comment for everybody in the room. So we have a failing Richardson dam that we have to deal with at some point. So what are the creative solutions regarding this uh result? Love to hear anybody who's got comments about how to fix this dam.
Mr. Grassman, would you?
Well, I think what the what the ABC, part of the point the ABC made was that the conservation fund has money available. Seventy five percent of land use change tax penalties that are levied um go into the conservation fund. Uh I don't think there's probably enough to fully fund a replacement at this point. Uh but I think part of the point, I don't wanna speak for the committee, but part of the point that was reduced to the minutes was that. Uh if there are other funds available, again, the conservation fund monies are still taxpayer dollars, just the same as property tax dollars or the other capital reserve funds. Um they're just directly diverted into that fund. Um and so if if there are other monies available um that could be took, put towards that priority. Um the budget committee was recommending utilizing those funds before asking voters for additional funds on top of that. Um obviously, that would take funds away from the conservation fund to fund other priorities, like conserving additional land and things like that. Um but that's, that was the recommendation of the budget committee.
Um I see the chair of the conservation commission is here. Do you, can you address um your ability to fund the Richardson dam?
All right, come on.
Please, please do.
About that.
Please do.
So. I'll, I'll try not to pontificate too much, but. The the purpose of the land use change tax. And the reason that the conservation commission was assigned by the voters of the town to collect that. Is to allow the conservation commission to keep within its mission, which is, you know, similar in a way to fire and safety. It's about preserving and protecting the natural resources of the town. And every time, the reason where that land use change tax comes in, the lands that is changing. Is open space within the town. And then conservation fund gets a few pennies of the dollar of that land going away forever. Those natural resources going away forever. And um, you know, the chief way in which we do a lot of them, the chief thing that we do with the money is to conserve land. And if we leave the conservation fund dry, we're not gonna be able to conserve land. As it is, we're very fortunate. We have a partner in the Southeast Land Trust. And and so in recent years, you know, what we've been able to use those funds for is to make a reasonable contribution. When the Southeast Land Trust is conserving land. And uh I understand that's town money, but the conservation commission, if it's gonna keep within its mission of preserving and protecting those natural resources. I don't think the commission would in good conscience be able to say, sure, take the money and fix the dam. And when a an important conservation project comes up, we'll pump. You know, we've we've funded a few times and not been able to contribute to things. And and going forward, uh we've talked about uh. You know, Mr. Bailey mentioned development increasing roads every time. You know, that that's also true in terms of conservation, every time that happens, conservation, you know, open space with natural resources shrinks. And. I don't think it's good for the people who live in this town to see that shrink without conserving really important. Naturals, natural spaces that exist in this town, both for the sake of preserving that habitat. For the plants and creatures who live in it, but also for the citizens who enjoy it. And also for people who believe that it's really important to preserve those natural resources. We don't wanna live in, you know, no respect to Dover, Rochester, Portsmouth. But that, I don't think we want Barrington to be that. Even that, you know, um yeah, I I I think some of those funds. In the conservation commission has stated its willingness to make a contribution to that project, but but not the vital piece. We we. We're just not gonna do that. We won't. I think I can safely speak for the commission. We just won't want to do that.
Any other questions? You're blocking Mr. Bailey. You wanna answer?
Yeah, Mr. I think that uh we have uh ample money to turn around and. I'm sure the words, it's not big, let's shut it off, is to preserve uh the habitat. And I think uh. Minimal amounts here selected to uh go for the dam improvement and put more money back onto the taxpayers. I think that's unfair. I think that, you know, if you could speak to your conservation commission, uh it would help taxpayers two ways. One, we already have some of that money that was collected in taxes, and that will be less that the taxpayers had to contribute. Uh uh to be helping that work. I'm just asking you to reconsider. Because we know that forty seven percent of the land here in Barrington has ha- has different uh taxations. Some of this wetlands and what have you, and we are here very, very fortunate. So I remember being on the conservation commission when it was uh, let's get to ten. It's meant to be wanted to get to to ten acres to have put aside, start way back when the child delivery. And now look where we're at, ten percent, sorry, not to the eight percent, ten percent. And now look where we're at right now. I mean, that is just mushrooms that end up, and I welcome it. But to turn around and ask the taxpayers to pay it again, sir, I think that's, that's good, that's optimal, especially in this time of need. And I think that if you could uh talk to the conservation commission again and uh maybe uh get a little bit more uh fruitful. I think would help everybody here in town. Thank you.
Well, thank you for, you know, telling me what you think and and I appreciate what you're saying. I think you're underestimating the voting system. I think you're underestimating the voters of this town and the citizens of this town. I, I, I remember when I brought. You know, the, the land use change tax appropriated for the Conservation Commission. Was adapted before SB two. And came in when actually a neighbor of mine stood up at a town meeting and said, let's just do this. Let's do fifty percent for conservation. And I wasn't partisan, but I was told it was overwhelmingly supported. And then a few years later, there was. A thought within the Conservation Commission that we really could use more in order to do our job properly. Given the amazing increase in the value of land, the cost of, of the first life. So, and I, I, I'm not telling tales out of school here. Within the Conservation Commission itself, it was, it was worried about, about how that would sit with the voters of the town. And that if the legislative session, someone would stand up and say, let's reduce it to one percent. That didn't happen.
Yeah.
That didn't happen. The, the, we brought that forward by petition. But by the time we got done with the legislative session at that session, that once again, I don't have the tapes. There was wide support for it. And I, I think it would be reasonable. For this select board to ask the citizens of the county to contribute. We haven't talked exact numbers. But the Conservation Commission, I've had discussions with the town administration, chairman's select board. About how the Conservation Commission would be willing to make a sizable contribution. And we already have, we did. Lining low-cost engineering studies, let's say ten thousand dollars is a little bust hot. And really, it's money. And then we again contributed being willing to. Pay for a fifty thousand dollar further engineering study. So now we're into sixty thousand dollars. We'll do more, but we don't need to do the whole, whole thing. We just don't.
Uh, Mr. Stocci, do you want to uh, ask Mr. Grossman a question?
You're muted, so we can't hear you if you're talking.
I do, um, and I expect when, you know, you come up to a presentation, you have the numbers that you want to work with. Uh, just as we expect that our police chief and fire chief, when they come up and ask them for money, you know, they know what they're asking for. Um, you know, just. Pretty simple, you know, you, you know, it's just, we, we don't talk about roundabout, you know, it's, it's for the voters, you know, we need to know the numbers. You know, you can't come in and just not have your numbers ready and just be like roundabout. So I, I apologize, but just uh, had another thing, but forgot about it in the meantime, because it's been a while, so.
I could speak to the cost of the project, um, real quick. So the fifty thousand dollars that the Conservation Commission. Recently approved towards the engineering of the project, um, was to actually bring the, the design together. So the ten thousand was a preliminary. Um, feasibility study, if you will, what are our options with the dam? Um, the result of that process was let's reconstruct it as non-jurisdictional. Um, that, I wouldn't necessarily say that that is pending currently, because I think that's still the policy direction. Uh, but we're doing some additional due diligence, um, on the removal option, um, based on our conversation at the last meeting. Uh, but the fifty thousand dollars is to answer all of those questions. It's the design, it's the, um. The cost estimate. So the, um, those, the. Cost, engineer's estimate of the cost is in progress. Um, and that's, you know, we're just waiting on the engineer to develop that. Uh, as far as appropriating funds uh, for the project, we have from the ten thousand dollar feasibility study. Uh, we have a, a roundabout estimate of three hundred thousand dollars, which was in. Twenty twenty-one dollars, um, I believe, uh, for the, the style of reconstruction that they were proposing. Uh, we have two things competing, um, on that number. One, obviously inflation, which has been a lot since twenty twenty-one. Also, um. Most involved felt that the preliminary design, um, was overdesigned, was over-engineered, and there were cheaper ways to accomplish the same task. Um, with, um, um, more, a more Barrington approach, maybe. Um, so that three hundred thousand number, it has what we've been operating under. Um, but we'll know more from the engineer, um, hopefully in the next couple of weeks.
So we, we have this issue with the dam. I mean, is there anything that has? Um, you know, that the commission can do to maybe help with uh, getting that land behind. Uh, Liberty Truck, get that, um, developed and, and have a, a space out there. So, you know, we can get some stuff to pay for the stuff. Just thinking, zooming out, looking at long term, but. You know, what, what can we do? Is there anything open like that, or is that out of line here?
I'm not familiar with what you're talking about.
The, I think maybe what he's asking is, is the Conservation Commission involved in pursuing economic development opportunities? Uh, as additional funding mechanism. Uh, I would say not traditionally, and I, I don't think it's necessarily within the scope. Of the Conservation Commission. Yeah. So, uh, but that's, that's not to say that there aren't things in progress. The Select Board Chair has actually. Um, had some conversations at the conference we were at, um, specific to the property behind Liberty Truck. Uh, I will say, and I won't go into detail because I, um, haven't dove into it completely, but after the. Select Board meeting last week, when, um, I put in parentheses tentative next to the. Policy direction for the Richardson Pond Dam, I reached out to our contact at, uh, the Dam Bureau, DES. Um, to basically say, hey, um, there are some questions being asked about reconstruction versus removal. Of the dam, and I want to make sure that if these conversations delay. The project from a twenty twenty-three project, um, that we're still in good graces with, with DES. Um, with a letter deficiency and things like that. Um, she responded back, and like I said, I haven't read. All of the bullet points of what she said would be required in the meantime, if the project were delayed. Um, some of the things were like brush clearing and patching some of the holes with gravel and, and things like that. Um, but it's possible that the, I'm not saying the project should be deferred, um, and make that clear. But it's possible that, um, DES wouldn't object to the project being deferred, not only to resolve the. Um, removal versus reconstruction, um, if that ends up being a larger conversation, um, but also to line up funding. Um, and so, not that that should weigh heavy on your decision-making, but I want to make sure. You're aware, and I intend to, to follow up more on, uh, next Monday's meeting. Where we'll have some comments from the Conservation Commission. Their meeting on Thursday, they'll be discussing reconstruction versus removal at some level. Um, and the Conservation Commission Chair is, um, has asked for a letter from Southeast Land Trust on the topic as well.
Which was, I. It was supposed to come today. It's not, it's not in my mailbox.
Uh, well, I was planning on the twelfth anyways, so we're, we're still on schedule for that. So there'll be more discussion about it. But just before we dive too deep into the weeds on Richardson Pond Dam, um, we'll talk more about it next week, and if we need to defer. Um, that's an option which I think is reasonably on the table, um, but that's ultimately up to the select board.
I, I, I want to say two more things and then I'll get out of the way. Uh, one is about specific numbers. Uh, I, I don't think I'm telling tales again when I say that I had informal discussion with. With, with you, Conver, with you, Darren, a couple of months ago, which we played with some numbers, so. The commission was kind of waiting for you folks to come to us and say, here's, here's the number we. Like either put into that useful, we can put in from the town side. And that hasn't happened yet, so we're not doing that. And in terms of a letter from the Southeast Land Trust. Just, just real quickly, it amounts to two things, you know, one is, uh, to. That, that in order to demolish the dam and let the water run through. What we have to do is to hire an ecologist and, and even. One that specifically recommended, and then take, it would take some time. Wouldn't take a year, but it takes some time to hire this person, spend that money. And I, I can tell you. Probably the commission would be good for that, because that's a value to observing those resources anyhow, to know what we got. And, and the, and, uh. You know, that, that would be involved, because we're talking in terms of what's in the easement. About the habit, the value of the habitat itself, in itself, and also its value for. Uh, you know, for recreation by citizens from the town, so. But that's what we would have to deal with, if we're going to take that. And did you say that, uh. On page eight of the SLR study, it, it says according to SLR cluster, must have not get that one just to fix it up, so. And I'll be quiet. Thank you. Unless there are.
Thanks. Anyone else have any questions? Uh, Mr. Gibson.
Well, actually, I, I, it's about the energy, but I, I just wanted to say to you, I, I think that, um, everything I hear from, from voters, uh, both in the. Running up to join the select board and, and incense is how much they value the conserve land in Barrington and that. Barrington has a certain, I'm constantly hearing people that have just moved here and how they love the trails. And I'm also hearing longtime residents say over and over, what's with all this development? What's with all this building? It's, it's changing in Barrington. And so I think. And I worry too about eventually the, the funds from land use change tax. Win, it's going to continue to go down, so the, the only means the Conservation Commission has to both. Uh, preserve and acquire these lands is just going to keep going down. And so at some point. The town has to be able to assist that. I mean, and. And again, from what I hear from the voters, this is very important to them, so. Um, if we're, we're not able to get things funded via a more article. I think we should be looking at things like park maintenance and other things, and not to get lost in the weeds, I know we've talked about other options. But I, I think that, um, assisting Conservation Commission is really important. So that they can make a strong entity, uh, which I think our, our citizens want.
Thank you, Mr. Grossman. You bet. Appreciate it. Uh, oh, Bailey, cheers.
Yeah, I just, I would like to, I appreciate, oh, yes.
I forget, did it have a comment?
Yeah, I mean, um.
Energy.
Energy, uh, capital reserve, Peter, you had mentioned that it wasn't really clear what they were asking for, and. I don't know how much you, you had gotten filled in, but it was to do an energy audit of the library and rectory building. Which is really an entry hog. And, uh, I know they're also looking at grant possibilities, um, to, to do so. And, uh, from the energy committee, the energy committee formed, um, there's a lot of exciting opportunity, uh. With this to save the town and taxpayers and residents, uh, significant amounts of money on energy. Uh, most through efficiencies and, and alternative energies, so, um, from a budget standpoint, that. Recognizing the value of energy is important. So I think that we're hoping to. Uh, not only have a concrete example of what they're going to do with some of this money, uh, by doing an energy audit and other audits. Um, but to show the, the citizens, um, there's a lot of opportunity to save money as well.
May I consult with my. Um, my recollection is among the concerns I were. Um, what would happen after the audit is then. They're going to be a proposal for a lot more money next year, or they're going to find money somewhere in the budget. Support, whatever the recommendations are. Was there anything else, Mike?
No, actually, it came down to this, uh, you know, this was not a safety issue that we were looking at. Nor was it a, um, and with you, uh, of risk avoidance in this particular case. But we were actually going, considering, um, not recommending these expenditures, because we were trying to avoid. Um, impacting the tax rate this year. Uh, so, you know, yeah, this is only ten thousand dollars, but it's also ten thousand dollars more. That we end up going and having to fund for. So all of these things taken together. Those four items that we had suggested that they be removed were, uh, they totaled out to over. Three hundred thousand dollars of the budget. And we, you know, that one point five million. We wanted to go and bring that down to a more manageable level, and I think that's what we were doing when we recommended these particular items be removed. If you, you know, if you want to go and put them back in, you want to reduce them, you want to go and add more to them.
I, I think for the energy audit, um, the, the deliverable that would be is, is a list of things that. And, and associated, um, savings from any type of mitigation one chose. And so. I think from an energy audit, in many of the times, it's the, the investments you make and that will pay for it perhaps within the year. And so. You know, you, you could look, you have a, uh, a cart kind of choice of, of things you could do. And see how much you, you could save, you know, just looking at how many times they fill up the oil tank and how much they're spending. Fifteen thousand dollars a tank. You know, you could pretty quickly see how much money you could save in a year on what you spent.
That's great.
Thank you. The last time I did a, uh, energy audit on a building was years ago, Peter. And that energy audit took care of everything, from the lights to the drinking fountain. And, uh, but just on the change of the balances alone, in the first year, we had a thirty-seven percent savings in electricity. And by the time the whole project was completed, that's putting on dampers. On some of the rooftop units, changing the speed of the motors, uh, changing some of them out completely, everything else. Payback was right at six and a half years. That's what was guaranteed, but we did it in less than five. And the savings of the town after that, back then it was the school department, but. It was just astronomical, and for a few dollars out there for the energy, uh, audits, and you can see where it's at. And as a guarantee with it, then we also have our energy, uh, supplier here that would, uh. Pay us a certain amount of money for doing all of this. Uh, I, I have to say that, uh. That's, I think we, we, we missed first place on this one.
Well, George, you could direct that to your other board members and make a change. I mean, it's a recommendation to the committee.
Yeah, no, I understand it, but he was bringing it up there and, you know, the. It, it's just something else that I want to support him on what he's trying to put forward there with, with all of us sitting here, because. I know, I know what it does.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
But of course, then one year I had, I had a building we did, and all the ballots they put in there, three hundred and something ballots. They all were being wrong in Mexico, but they had to commit pre-charge and change every one of them. But anyway, that's not here or there, but that's what happened. So yes, no, I, I, I agree with what you're saying is that. I think we should, uh, look forward to putting that back in there to have that audit, and you'd be surprised, you would be. Mesmerized would be the best word to use.
The last January to February, I stood at the transfer station on lots of Saturdays and Tuesday afternoons. And if anybody would give me thirty seconds as they pulled over, um, this was when I was campaigning for a select board. I actually used the example of the rect apartment, because they had just gone through a tank of oil in ten days. And then actually ran out of oil, but people got these reports that day, uh, and recognized how cold it was and were able to get. Some relief, uh, before they were getting damaged down to the building. So, you know, going through. A whole tank of oil for that building in ten days is pretty, uh, onerous. And so I said to voters, um, I believe we have to spend a little bit of money so we can save in the long term. And I have to say, no one disagreed with that. Now, people chose not to come over and talk to me, but they didn't know what my little pitch was, um. For that twenty or thirty seconds, but I just want to put it there. No one disagreed with that, that you need to sometimes spend a little bit to save.
Now would be a great opportunity for the select board to make changes to the recommendations.
I think, probably I've talked to John, uh, if you look at the row labels, um. They actually cut three cents into, into the wrong category. Oh, quick look. Never mind.
I, I think he just colored.
Yeah, I understand. That third plant, just, and just the colors are off. That's okay, we're good. Uh, but are there any recommendations?
I saw Jim's ham go up virtually.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jim. Sorry, speak to me.
Uh, that would be the library capital reserve, so. I don't think that was a secret. We're talking about that.
You would recommend that zero now?
Correct.
Okay.
You guys want to vote on them individually or do you want to kind of put, put them on the board and then consider at the end? It's up to you.
Well, we only have, I think, we only have, uh, five.
I've got this to go to the, the transfer station. We need help there. So, you know.
Question would be Mr. Chairman, the Richardson Pond Dam.
That's, well, no, we can do it. We can do, we, we can recommend. We, we have to decide out of all these recommendations what to do. So we talked about the, the floor that we dropped out. Would, if he, please have a seat. I, I think we have their recommendation. We now look and make a decision. Mr. Sukosh has recommended that we drop the library capital reserve to zero. That's one proposal that we have.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Mr. Um, I would like to make a proper proposal and eliminate the library capital reserve in replacement of the safety building design and impact fee. That would be my motion.
That was $150,000. Is that correct? I think that was something.
Yeah, 150, so.
So could we just repeat that? I got the beginning part of that about the library. I'm not sure I understood what you said about the.
Do you mind?
Right now, on the, on, online here on the meeting. It doesn't really show the amount here, so, but I know it's, it's something that the town definitely needs. It's, it's going to be a, you know, a need, not a want. But, uh, I have the library capital reserve at $25,000 with, uh, tax impact of, uh, O2. But then when it comes for the recommended to be removed, um, you know, it doesn't give me anything here on the, on the table right now. So I can't see what that would be tip for tat.
The public safety. Jim, the initial proposal for the public safety building was $150,000.
Yep. So then what would the tax?
Which would be about a 10, 10 cent tax impact.
Okay. Well, I, I still want to go with it because I know we're going to need it. It's just, you know, we're, we're milking it along now, so.
Well, I, I think we all agree about the public safety building, that the need for it, but that seems to be a reasonable ARPA fund. And I think Connor, the, the ARPA funds are, it's a guarantee that we're going to get, but we don't know how soon. It seems like a project like that would be an ideal, you suppose, funds.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So that's for you all to decide as far as.
Left that account though. For the ARPA.
So the select board will have, based on commitments made right now, about $600,000 available in the ARPA funds. Um, but a, not to be spent currently. Um, and so, um, I, yeah, I think, I mean, a dollar's a dollar. Money's fungible, right? So the select board, um, has the ability to make, to make decisions on how to appropriate those funds. What I would say from a good government standpoint is identifying one-time expenditures to use one-time funding sources for is generally good government. Taking, um, um, one-time revenue sources and committing them to ongoing expenditures like offsetting the operating budget, hey, we're going to pay this department's wages out of the ARPA funds this year. It's generally bad government because that's good while you have those funds. And then when you don't have those funds, now you're hitting an impact on the operating budget. So by that metric, a one-time project like engineering of a public safety building and would generally be consistent with good government of spending a one-time revenue source.
Okay. Well, I'll retract that motion, but I don't see the, the need for the library capital reserve. So sorry for, thank you for the clarity on that, Connor, and the recommendations, but really cleared it up for me. But that's, that's where I'm at.
Was that top of the bottom?
What was that? Sorry.
No, I was talking to the chair, asking, does he want to start at the top of the list or the bottom of the list? We're right now.
Well, I, I'd like to know what, if there are any change. Do we like the, the budget committee's recommendations collectively? Or are we going to make some change? Jim just suggested one change. Are we going to make big changes because we want, we might want to look at the, if there are going to be a lot of changes, we're going to propose we want to look at the total impact. If it's just one or two, then we might want to consider each individually. So just briefly, I assume Mr. Gibson wants to put money back into the energy.
I think so. And, and we, I don't know if there's a minimum to qualify as a warrant article, but we'll probably save between $5,000 or something to that. I think again, the timing of this is important to the voters to show that we're investing in finding ways to save money and be more efficient. And I think the energy committee is, is, is right for that.
And I heard from the fire chief that he's willing to, um, recommend a reduction in the fire truck capital reserve, recognizing the value of the energy committee capital reserve. Um, so if the select board is looking for an offset, um, the fire chief would be comfortable supporting a reduction of the fire truck capital reserve from 100 down to 90 this year. Um, and that's based on what they're looking at with the, um, uh, refer refurbishment of, uh, some of the equipment versus, uh, just purchasing new outright. Um, but just for the select board's consideration.
But you know, we're, we're, we're there changing our monies around, and I appreciate it, Rick. But, you know, we need to look at the energy savings that we can get down the road, not just, just, just the immediate future. And I know where you're coming from, and I just recommend going with the 10,000. Let's say it that way. And then we take care of the public safety, but we know where I'm coming from. On that public safety, the three groups, and I think we should just leave it the way it is. Public safety is, I am not in favor of any reduction except for the, uh, excuse me, Madam Chair, but, uh, going from 25 to 70, uh, that's the only one out of the ones that they submitted, the five they submitted that I would say, uh, to approve and then leave the other ones standing. Because what, what, what is already there for requests to get us going is we can't get caught behind the eight balls. As you, as everybody knows, uh, and you and yourself is that the, uh, ABC found out and did an extensive study on, on just equipment alone and found out that when the time comes in '34, we're not even going to have enough money. And then we'll change it. So we made changes on that on the last budget to come forward to help compensate for that. And hopefully by the time it's, it's time to, for you then, we'll get new, we will have the money available to do that. So, you know, my recommendation is everything but the, uh, library. And I know that as members of this board that dearly hold true for the library, but we're looking at changes that will help the town. And, and I'm not trying to say the library's not going to help the town, but I, I consider these four more important to do that and move forward, including the dam. The dam is for the conservation and I would think we should do that. Or we should wait until, uh, another week on the dam to see if we can have enough money or see what the actual cost is going to be.
I don't think we're going to know the actual cost. I don't think that study's been done yet. Am I right on that?
I would say there's going to be some more information on.
Yeah, maybe as soon as next meeting. Um, that, that was what I had put the engineer to task for.
Okay. Are you saying keep the library at 25, the reduction that the ABC made?
Yes, yes, all right. That's.
And keep this in place at the 25. Yeah. But I'm okay with that.
Because over the years that I've been here, we have kicked some down the road and we've had to pay for it. You know, taxpayers get caught up in the, uh, cost of materials and everything else over the years, so that was it.
And you proposed the energy capital reserve, Mr. Gibson said five, Mr. Bailey says 10, keep it at 10. We can do this like an auction if I can. I got to lie a little bit in the next one.
I'm good.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, all right. And the request, remember the initial request for the highway extension of capital reserve was 300,000. So do we want to go with the budget committee's recommendation, 200,000? Personally, I would, but.
Especially what Connor had said, they could, this is a reasonable proposal because it can be made up. I'm sorry.
No, no, you, you, you can do anything you want. I'm just saying that, you know, we, we have what comes to. Do we have any requests coming in that you know of for acceptance of, uh, roads?
There are a few subdivisions that are in progress, um, that, that are waiting to be eligible, that are planning board approved. Um, so yes, there are, there are, um, multiple subdivisions that will be eligible in the future.
Is it going to be a couple of years for those or is it going to be coming to us next year for acceptance? Just a rough guess.
Yeah, I mean, I think that we have a couple that would be eligible next year. Um, and in, as far as numbers of subdivisions, um, so part of the problem is they're not eligible until a year after the top coat is laid. This project, for example, is an approved project that we expect a request to take over the road, but they probably won't put the cop, top coat down for another three years.
Until the second check section is done.
Well, yeah, until they're, they, until they construct everything. So.
That's what I think. There's a lot of extra filing stuff.
So I, I can go back with you.
Perfect.
To the shit, yeah.
So it looks to me like the significant changes that we have recommended is to reduce the cap, library capital reserve to zero. That is what Mr. Sukosh recommended. No, no, this is, this is collectively in print and some of what we've said here. And then the energy capital reserve, Mr. Bailey says 10, Mr. Gibson shaking, he said, yes. So, uh, we could have motions to accept, or we can have motions to amend the budget committee's recommendation, and then we could vote on the whole recommendation. If that sounds reasonable to the board.
By individual Warren article?
Yeah, well, just the two that are.
Right. So start with the library, then do anything.
Are there any other comments about the library capital reserve? Okay, Mr. Sukosh's, I guess, is a motion, uh, would be to reduce the library capital reserve to zero. I'll second that motion so we can vote on it. Whether, um. Go ahead.
Oh, go ahead. I just said I was just one of four.
No, no, that's fine. That's, I mean, that's, that's how we do this, but it, I assume that's your motion, the general removal.
Correct.
It's fair. Okay. Are there any, is there any other discussion of this? The board? I think not. We're ready to vote. Mr. Gibson?
Uh, I would say no. I like the ABC's.
Okay.
Induction of it.
Right. You want to stay with ABCs?
No, the motion was to bring it to zero.
Yes. So I said no.
Okay.
Capella, no.
Mr. Bailey.
What does a no vote mean?
That we'll keep $25,000 budget.
Well, it means we won't take it to zero.
We won't take it to zero. So leave it where the, where they recommended it.
So they're at 3,000 is what they.
No, 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 no. We're talking about the capital reserve. Fiber capital reserve, $25,000 for zero. Good choice.
Well, I want to leave it at 25.
Then you'll vote no.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And that's right. Vote no. Mr. Sukosh, I'm sorry. I got in your way. How do you vote?
I vote yes.
And I vote no. So it's four, four no's and, uh, one is favor. So that failed will continue. We'll leave that in the recommendation. Energy capital reserve. Resolution ended at 10,000. I assume that's a motion?
It is a motion, sir.
Second, second. No, you made the motion.
Well, second is now.
You're right. I'm sorry. Okay. You got that, Jim?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, any other discussion on that? No further discussion, vote. Um, Mr. Gibson.
Gibson, I.
Capella, I.
Sukosh?
No.
Vote no. Um, George. Bailey, I. Mantrick, I. So that will come to 10,000. Are there any other recommendations for changes to the budget committees, advisory budget committees report?
I would like to that we keep the $3,000 in, uh, the budget for the library technology capital reserve.
Okay.
There a second?
A second. Mr. Gibson, silence. Any, any further discussion on that? That was the one you were talking about, Jim.
No, George was talking about that.
Oh, George, I'm sorry. Apologize. George. Any other questions? Okay. Again, that's to put $3,000 back in as a, a warrant article to go to the library capital, library technology capital reserve. Any other discussion, questions?
Mr. Reminded us, a lot of money already there.
$9,000. Last, okay. Uh, then we'll come to a vote. Uh, Mr. Gibson.
Gibson, I.
Capella, I.
Bailey, no.
Man, uh, Sukosh?
Sukosh, no.
Mantrick, yes. Three, two. So 3,000 there. Okay. Um, and we'll, we'll have a little more information on the Richardson Pond, Pond Dam reconstruction next meeting, so.
Several plus 40 minutes.
Yeah. I believe that. Does that sound right to you too, Jim?
Uh, can you say that again? I was just, uh, doing a little reflection in my head. Sorry.
All right. No, that will reconsider the Richardson Pond Dam reconstruction at our next meeting, once we have a little more information from the engineers.
Sure.
That sounds right. Okay. So now I would entertain a motion to approve, or I guess to approve the advisory budget committee regulation as, as amended.
Why didn't you make a motion to place the Warren articles as presented, at the dollar amount presented on the warrant for 2023?
Okay.
Did we just, did we discuss the public safety?
No, we have not. We haven't had a vote yet in public safety, sir.
Well, he, Dana had asked for any changes to what was proposed, um, so I think that's why he omitted it. Does anybody want to propose a change to that one?
But I, I would like to see it go back in as 150,000. I'd like to be put back in. Like a motion to put back in.
I think, George, we've talked about maybe, um, considering ARPA funds for public safety.
That's two, three years down the road.
It, it should be next year.
Time to, to get it planned before the.
Very well. I, I, I would withdraw the motion since I wasn't seconded. Okay, I'm all for it.
All right. So I guess the motion is to. Say that again?
To, to place the warrant articles and amounts, uh, on the warrant as presented and amended.
Right.
With the exception of Richardson Pond.
Well, it's, it's in there as zero, so it will stay there as zero, um, until the select board makes a change. And until, until or unless the select board makes a change.
Do we have a deadline on when we take that?
It's a great question. So the select board has the authority to change anything to do with the budget or Warren articles all the way up until the last public hearing. And so the first public hearing and, and hopefully only, um, but public hearing is scheduled for January 10th. And so the, what the statute says is that you have to hold a public hearing on what voters will be considering at the, at town meeting, deliberative session, the town meeting vote. And so we advertise what, um, will be the budget and what will be on the warrant. And at the public hearing, you invite the residents to make comment and discuss, uh, the, what is to be presented as a last opportunity before it's finalized for deliberative session. The select board has the authority to make changes at that meeting. And if changes are made, then a second public hearing is required, uh, in order to go through the process again and make it clear to voters what will be on. Uh, and so that's where you'll see, um, a tentative meeting for the holiday, the Monday holiday, January 17th. So that would be the. So that would be the second public hearing if necessary. In recent history, we haven't needed a second public hearing because we start the budget process far enough in advance that we iron everything out ahead of the. The first public hearing and that's sufficient.
So when is the last meeting in December?
The 12th, next Monday. A week from today. So that's why we're finalizing these tonight. In the budget.
Yeah, the rest of the year, please.
Okay, so.
So that's $984,000 worth of warrant articles that the select board will be voting on to put on the warrant. I, I didn't catch who made the motion or seconded yet. Okay.
Secosia said no.
Gibson, I.
We need a motion. So the motion is to present the warrant articles and amounts as amended on the warrant. To place these articles on the warrant.
Which is essentially the energy reserve and the library.
All of them. So you have to take an action to place them on the warrant, to adopt these as warrant articles.
Those are really the only changes we made today to what was proposed by the ACC.
Yes. Exactly. Yep. So that's, so the $984,000 is the current total.
No longer a million. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gibson. You have a second.
Okay.
Mr. Gibson, second. We'll, we'll do it by. By rule. Mr. Gibson?
Gibson, I.
Secosia? Secosia, no. Mantrick, I. So that motion passes. All right.
And so to be prepared for the warrant articles, we will, at the public hearing, once the public hearing is closed, we'll take votes on the select board's recommendation. To be included on the warrant for each article. And that will be a recommendation on each individual article. So if a member wanted to support the bridge and covert capital reserve, but not the highway equipment capital reserve, as far as your recommendation, you'd have the ability to, to make a vote. That way, and that will be on, on the 10th. And it will be important to have a, a full board and it can be virtual also. But to make sure that those votes are out of five, it always leads to confusion. We have five select board members. How come there's only three votes? So.
And, and the advisory budget committee will also meet. Tomorrow?
Yeah, they'll meet tomorrow, but they'll generally record their recommendation votes after the public hearing, just in case there's any changes. But there would be nothing to stop them from taking those now preemptively and then changing them if they have to. Can we talk about the operating budget a little bit? Okay. So the advisory budget committee didn't have any recommendations, any recommended changes that haven't happened throughout the process. But as you know, we start the process before all of the numbers come in. There might still be a few changes between now and our public hearing. On the 10th, based on new hires and other census changes that we experienced. So I just wanted to give you a quick overview and I'll just quickly run through the documents that are in your packet. So the first document that you see is the 2023 budget summary by function. And this document reflects the budget as it exists right now. So it's a $8.2 million budget, which reflects an 8.26% increase from the approved 2022 budget. And that shows it by function, essentially by each department. So next, you'll see the operating budget wages and summary, wages and benefits summary. So the large majority of our operating budget is wages and benefits. And this document summarizes that. So 5.2 million of that 8.2 million is wages and benefits. And this reflects those categories in the 2023 proposed budget. The next document is the summary of wage and benefit impacts. So again, not only is the largest portion of our budget wages and benefits, but the largest portion of the increase from 2022 to 2023. Is a reflection of changes in wages and benefits. So you have itemized on this document, which for those watching at home and interested, these, not only are all these documents linked to the town administrator report. But they're also available on the town's budget binder website, which is barrington.nh.gov/2023budget. So there are some changes to this wage and benefit impact for the 2023 budget. And most notably is the fire department. So the, you'll remember in, over the summer, when the fire chief and I presented to you a request to add the fourth full-time firefighter. So one of the options that the fire chief gave the select board at the time was to consider phasing that position into the operating budget. Using the ambulance revolving fund. And so the, I was waiting for the budget committee to complete their review of the ambulance revolving fund and recommendations for. Capital reserves and contributions to equipment replacement schedules. And they didn't make any changes. Previously, they had recommended using that towards the replacement of equipment. That ambulance revolving fund is sufficient to replace an ambulance, which isn't scheduled to be replaced for two years. So there's funds available in that account. And so I talked to the fire chief and we changed the fire department budget request to reflect a phase in of that fourth position. Where the wages will come from the ambulance revolving fund in 2023 and the benefits will come from the operating budget. So you'll see that essentially what we did is we took that $45,667 from a 2023 impact and that will be a 2024 impact. And so to smooth out the impact and increase in the budget. And obviously, part of that was necessitated by the addition of the working facility manager into the 2023 budget. Which the select board identified as a priority a couple of meetings ago. And certainly, if you have questions, I'll keep going, but just chime in if you have questions on any of these updated documents. So this was a document that I started two years ago to show how the, the budget developed throughout the process. So this budget process changes summary by function shows that the budget request reduced by 0.21% or $17,000. Throughout the process and you'll see by function, how much the budget changed. So in some areas, it was reduced by 56,000 and other areas increased by 100,000. So the net result from beginning of process to end of process was only a change, a reduction of $17,000. But the, the priorities changed a lot throughout the process. So that's a summary. And then the next document is actually a, a line by line detail of every change that was made to the budget. And this is especially valuable to understand the work that the budget committee has gone through, the department heads and the select board through the budget process. To review the budget on a line item by line item basis and make sure what we're presenting to voters is what we actually need and reflects the, the needs of departments in town. So you, you'll know from my conversation about property tax impact and everything to do with property taxes. That if you're just looking at the budget, you're missing half of the story. Because our locally collected revenue is a significant source of any impact to the tax rate. So 2022 was the first year where more than 50% of the revenue that it takes to run the town of Barrington. Comes from sources other than property taxes. And that's a, that's a great thing, right? So in a business, you talk about diversifying your revenue streams. And that's what the town of Barrington has. So every impact that we have on the, an increase in services or costing more to provide the same services, isn't born in property taxes alone. So what you have here is the revenue estimation for 2023 and history back to 2019. And the, the sum at the bottom is 4.2 million dollars in revenue is what we estimate for 2023. And that brings us to the, what I believe is the most important document of the whole budget process, which is your 2023 operating budget tax rate impact. And so what this document does, we went over this when the tax rate was set, line item by line item. I don't, I won't do this now, but this has been updated and I actually see a typo updated to reflect the year 2,323 instead of 2023. But anyways, the, what this document does is it takes our proposed operating budget of 8.2 million. The warrant articles right now of, of 971,000, but I'll update that to reflect 984,000. Our other impacts on appropriations, which include the war service credits. So the service connected total disability and the veteran credit. So assuming that the warrant articles, the select board intend to present to expand both of those credits pass. The impact on the, for, for tax rate setting is estimated at about $70,000. And so the next category is overlay, which is used to pay prior year abatements. And then you see the 4.2 million dollars. That's the locally collected revenue. So factoring all of that in and our assessed value, the, the projected impact of the operating budget. On the 2023 tax rate would be 24 cents. And right now we have 73 cents for the warrant articles, but that will change a little bit based on the decisions of the select board tonight. So the town tax rate in 2023 would be under $4, $3.90 something cents is based on the information that's available right now. You have a question? Eight cents what? And then you have another, a summary of the proposed warrant articles, which show the advisory budget committee recommendation. So this will be updated, obviously, to reflect the changes made by the select board. Fund balance, we won't spend a lot of time on, but updated documents to show fund balance and this, this colorful document, the targeted fund balance history. This is where you see that based on not utilizing any of the fund balance towards warrant articles in 2023. I estimate that we'll end up with a slight surplus over the 12.5% target. To 12.7% or $71,000 over the midpoint of that range. Which further supports why the, we're presenting the warrant articles on the tax rate opposed to using fund balance. Because of the commitment to the 12 and a half percent target for maintaining that fund balance. And the last document in here is the warrant article request, warrant articles requested during the 2023 budget process. So this shows the titles of all of the warrant articles we've discussed, monetary and non-monetary. So you'll see the tip district, the changes to the service connected total disability credit and the all veterans tax credit. The police collective bargaining agreement articles, the fiber to the home non-binding agreement, the noise ordinance. And the planning board is still working through their proposed zoning amendments. But you'll see a, a listing based on what they're looking at right now. Please, Mr. Capello?
See article on noise ordinance. Is this a citizen petition? Because this didn't come from planning board.
No, no, and it wouldn't come from the planning board. It's the select board's responsibility. So you'll remember, I think it was in June. I came to the select board to share that I had done some research into the town's noise ordinance. Which was originally adopted by the residents and amended twice by the select board, I think in 2015 and 2017. The select board doesn't have the authority to adopt, to amend an ordinance adopted by town meeting. And so those amendments hold no water. They're, they're meaningless. Even though that's what everybody relies on because, you know, those are the amendments. So at that time, I shared with you that the police chief doesn't like the noise ordinance anyways because it's unenforceable. It cites decibel limits and they don't have calibrated decibel meters. So the police chief is stealing a warrant article language for a noise ordinance from another community. Where their police department has had a great success in enforcing a noise ordinance. And so we'll review that at the next meeting.
You got a pre copy of that?
It'll be in your packet.
More articles will be to adopt a new ordinance by the.
To change the ordinance, right. Yes, to the new language. Yes, the only thing that comes from a planning board are zoning amendment, changes to the zoning ordinance, amendments to the zoning ordinance. So.
So move from not recommended. Oh, they're not recommended.
Yeah, so I left those on there. So yes, we'll move up the energy capital reserve and the library technology capital reserve. Onto the list and we'll leave public safety and Richardson Pond off for time being. So if there aren't any questions or proposed changes to the operating budget, I'll ask the select board to make a motion to present the operating budget. Onto the 2023 warrant as presented. And if there are any, you know, I hope changes won't happen, but there's still room to make changes prior to the budget hearing if necessary.
Take a motion to present the budget as listed to the warrant.
I'll second.
Any, any other comment? Mr. Gibson?
Gibson, I.
Secosia?
Secosia, no.
Bailey, I. Mantrick, I. So the operating budget will go forward. All right. I think we have done the budget presentation. We'll, we'll have, we'll have more detail on how we are going to work on the presentation through the 10th of January. At our next meeting. Consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve a little states consent agenda.
Any questions about consent agenda? Mr. Secosia, do you have any?
I don't.
Okay. All those in favor? Very good. Appointments, we brought this up last, at our last meeting, with the warrant. The Recreation Commission.
Think it must be approved, Mr. Moore.
Very good. Bailey? Any discussion? Yeah, thank you very much. And the Rec. Mission is looking forward to it. All those in favor? Mr. McIver?
Who, who made the motion, sir?
George.
Okay. Who's second?
George, okay, thank you.
Time to work out the work.
Yes, thank you. Please. So we are here at the first meeting in December. So I do want to read through real quick and recognize the tenure of the, those employees that were hired in December. So for those that pay close attention to the work anniversaries, which I know is everybody. The, our fire chief actually appears on the list twice. Not, not only because he does two person, two people's jobs, but he was originally hired in December of 2000 as a full-time member of the highway department. And he was appointed the part-time chief in July of 99. So in, in his full-time capacity in the town, he served the town for 22 years this month. Dana Martel, who's the custodian at the town hall, has reached the 10-year mark in the town of Barrington. Brian Dodier in the highway department for nine years, Susan Milliotto in the library for five years. Chris Waring in the fire department for four years, Jake Rosier in the fire department for four years. Karen Taylor in the fire department for three years, Lila Charam in the fire department for three years. Rebecca Nelson, our deputy town clerk, has worked in the town for three years and Malachi Fisher started in the fire department two years ago. Absolutely.
Thank you all for your good service. Appreciate it. You have anything?
No, Tiffany's actually right next door. She's got a cough and didn't want to subject you all to listening to her cough. For, for the evening, but she is on virtually. I don't know that she has anything, but we can ask her.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. It is a rough cough. Trust me. You'll thank me if you hear it. The only thing I have is, if you don't mind, on Thursday evening, I will send out the Recreation Commission appointees oath of office. That's it.
Very good. Thank you very much. Do you have any old business?
I do not.
Business. Board, board member reports any concerns?
We had an energy meeting last Thursday and that Volch from the Durham Energy Committee gave a really good presentation all about the Durham. gave a really good presentation all about the Durham Durham's experience with their energy committee, and it was really informative, and he gave us a lot of good pointers, so.
So planning board hasn't met since our last meeting, but I realized I forgot to say a couple of things. So we will have public hearings on the zoning amendments. The first one is January third at six o'clock, the second one's January seventeenth at six o'clock, and the next one's January twenty-fourth at six P M. And snow days are the day after. And the other thing that came up when planning board was reviewing capital improvement projects that I forgot to make note of last week was the town beach had shown up and that capital improvement, and the planning board was interested in exploring whether mendums could function as a as a place for Barrington residents to use. For.
Hello, for the meetings on the three seventeen.
Oh, six o'clock. Oh, right.
Jim, are you able to get on any, any of the, the committee, any?
Yeah, so with the rec department, obviously, this past weekend, they were involved with the Sora and the Fuller Express. And just a little update, the ski program has over seventy participants in it this year, so good numbers over there, they're still rolling with their fall sports and winter sports, and life is good in the rec.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey.
Thank you very much, we had come before us, three public hearings. The first two were approved, the second, the third one was not recommended, it was discontinued because it wasn't necessary because of the findings of the second one, and then there was an action item, appeal of a decision from father, mother, residents, proposed rehearing of zoning vote adjustment, September twenty-first of twenty twenty-two, discussion to grant various especially in the following cases, and we did not take that, we were not to take that, we were not that was extended.
Thank you. You have a budget committee report, discuss that, transfer station, middle of not, since for lunch, talk, and the school board will move tomorrow. That will be advisory budget committee report from that.
Mr. Chair, when I mentioned the town beach, I think Connor had a background on that to share.
I do.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, we need to cut you off.
No, no problem, so yeah, mendums, the University of New Hampshire owns a large portion of property in Barrington and a good chunk of the shoreline of Mendham's Pond. They have a recreation area that is run by the university campus recreation, and it is open to the public. So the, from what I understand, based on my own utilization, but also hearing from others, the the availability is sporadic and inconsistent. And so it's not necessarily something that you can count on, it's something that they staff with university students and, but there is a component that's open to the public for a fee. The second thing is the recreation department previously did summer camp, utilized the Mendham's Pond property at a fee for portions of their summer camp. The trouble with the water access is it's nothing like a beach, it's a it's a dock that you can jump off of and swim in the water, and you can swim around, it's a good place to launch a, you know, kayak canoe or paddleboard, but it's not a, there's no beachfront. And so they actually stopped taking campers there for a variety of reasons, most of which is it was pretty difficult to organize trips there, because the water access was basically, you walk off dock and you're over your head, you're not, you know, wading in with with young kids. But I had told Ms. Capiello that I, with the select board's direction, I would be glad to reach out to the university and and ask them about any collaboration opportunities between the town and the university with the Mendham's Pond property. We, obviously, the university doesn't pay any taxes in town, they do receive services. I know our fire department was there as as soon as possible, and their sailing facility burned, and obviously, the, you know, EMS calls, whatever, whatever else, so it might be worth asking if there's opportunity for collaboration, even if it's a discount for access for the residents of Barrington. Maybe they can get a pass through rec or the library, I don't know, just ideas, but with the select board's direction, I'd be happy to chase that down a little bit with the assistance of the recreation director.
Think they can do it all to us?
No.
Great piece of property.
It was, it was actually donated to the university for the purpose, for the express purposes of forest forest research and preservation. I always forget the gentleman's name, that, you know, McMillan or McMaster.
Mr. Mendham.
From from the. McDaniel, yes, thank you. So the, yeah, the it is encumbered similar as as any conservation property for for the purpose. So I guess, you know, maybe we could start up a forest research division of the town and use that as, you know. Yeah, 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 exactly. So anyways, is is the select board interested in pursuing that? Okay, no promises, I don't think it'll amount to a lot, but a conversation worth having, I think. Okay, great.
And could I just make an announcement, the master plan survey, part two, will happen on December tenth. Opens at eight thirty, I think we really get started at nine o'clock, nine to twelve, so any residents are welcome to join and give your more direct feedback to the.
E C L C.
There's two members in the family, make sure you fill out the application for each one, please.
When you get there, you mean?
Yeah, before you get there, so you have to set up for it, so if you and your husband and women, you have to fill out two of those, and then I'll be or two of them, I just, I just wrote it tonight. That's what, that's why I thought it was so strange.
Has not shared that with any of us.
Were we talking about the same thing, George, this is the master plan steering committee listening session?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I haven't heard that either.
Thanks to her, her nice was front ones and the second pages that little, put your name here, the here, if you, if you got more than one coming from your family, please fill out another one.
Oh, great, okay.
So you have to pre-register.
As I do have a register icon on their flyer. I don't know if that was mandatory, though.
Yeah, I didn't.
Okay, yeah, it could be a what, something to help them get an idea of how many people will be there for setup. But yeah, I don't think that it's required, I think anybody that shows up would be welcomed.
Will we go into the public?
Yes, we have a, we have a brief personnel.
Okay, well, before we do that, there are some public comment, please, again, meetings open to public, but public participation is limited. You're here or online or on that telephone. Enter a visual, wait until you're recognized, each speaker provided a single opportunity for comment, limited to three minutes. Public listeners should not expect response to their comments or questions, since the select board may not have discussed or taken a position on the matter. Public comment is not a two-way dialogue between speakers, select board, and or the town administrator. If you are going to address the board, please give your name and address. Anyone here like to comment, public comment?
Robert Russell, excuse me, ninety-nine Tolan Road will be, it'll be brief. I hadn't planned to make a public comment tonight, but with all the talk of the budgeting, my business has donated four patrol rifles to the Barrington Police Department. We donated two one year, two another year, I don't remember the specific years, but it was two and two. I'm not going to get into any of the specifics, but because of the litigation and the stuff revolving in town, I wasn't even going to propose offering any, it would have been appropriate. The original plan that I had discussed with the police chief was to donate two per year so that they they could have a dedicated rifle for every officer, a patrol rifle. I'd like to start doing that again. I did discuss it with the chief, I'm not going to put any words in his mouth, I had a concern that the board may not even accept it, so I'm not looking for any response. But I want to be a good community partner, and this is not something new, this is something we've already done. I think our police department should have the best tools in their toolkit. This is what we do, this is what my business does, and I'd like to continue that. So since all that stuff is behind us, I'd like to try to donate another two again this year and start again. I don't know exactly how to do that, except for maybe just send the five of you a letter with an offer, tell you roughly what they're they're valued, it's about two thousand dollars a gun, so it's about a four thousand dollar donation. And then I guess I just wait for an answer, so that's all, I just wanted to bring that up. It's our way of trying to help, if I can keep going.
Thank you. Anyone else present, like to make public comment? If you're online, feel raise your hand, excuse me, or if you're on the telephone, dial star six, wait until you're recognized, take yourself off mute when you're recognized.
I'm not seeing anything, Mr. Chair.
I see nothing online, heard nothing from on the telephone, so we're completely public comment section. Like a motion to go into my public session to discuss.
Take a motion to go into the public session, push it in.
That's like, you know, just segment all those in favor. I, I think Mr. Secosh.
I, Jim, I sent you a link, should be at the top of your inbox.
All right, let me figure it out, we'll get it done.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Welcome back to the public session of the Barrington Select Board meeting of five December. We have a motion to seal minutes for six months.
Make a motion to seal minutes for six months.
I second it.
Ms. Capiello seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I would really entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Good job.
Yes.
All those in favor? Just got an infection, so ordered.